At six thirty-one. All right, first on the agenda, grade six leadership students. First you gotta tell us who you are and where you're from.
I'm Sydney Sturgis and I'm from Westbrook Field Elementary.
I'm Hannah Tesla, I'm from Westbrook Field Elementary.
Night at the Museum, the students in fifth grade recently completed a three-month-long project where they studied an historical American icon and presented what they learned in a waxed exam format. They read a biography, took notes, and created costumes and artifacts, and wrote a script. Families were invited to hear the final product. This was the third year that the fifth grade had used this project to teach important Massachusetts social studies and language art standards.
And then do you guys some pictures of the examples of their costumes they've made by themselves and the artifacts they've made?
This is Gigi's birthday celebration from WBEs and WCES both participated. WCES and WBEs sixth graders participated in a Zoom with other schools. Students worked on solving math problems collaboratively. Community Reading Day, both WCES and WBEs took part in Community Reading Day. At both schools, members of the community went into the classrooms to read a book to their students. At WBEs, this day kicked off Reading Across America's Spirit Week.
And then for the Read Across America's Spirit Week, Monday was A Cat in the Hat and then the Community Reading Day. And then Tuesday was Fox and Sox, Wednesday was If I Ran Zoo, Thursday was Oh, The Things You Can Think, and Friday was The Sleep Book and Drop Everything You Read Day.
This was the schedule of the times, which was basically the same. And all the different people that had the same career or community ties for like bus drivers and police departments and the bank.
That's it? All right, so, does anybody have any questions? So I've got a couple of questions and a couple of comments. One, you two did awesome. You spoke loud and that's fantastic. Now, do you have a brother?
Yeah.
Is your brother the Project Three Fifty-One ambassador? Okay, you speak in public just like your brother does, you did a very good job. So, on the reading day, did you all read the same book?
No, we kind of just, we got to pick out our own and we could read our own.
Okay. Were you in any of the pictures of the night of the museum?
No, last year, yeah, last year we did our Night at the Museum and we were the second year they did it.
What did you do last year for the Night of the Museum?
I did Walt Disney.
I did Helen Keller.
All right, anybody have any questions? You guys did fantastic job, thank you. All right, from sixth grade seniors, well, we got all three of you tonight.
We do.
So, the week before vacation, we had a pep rally on Friday. And all the grades made banners, so the seniors did Pete the Cat. And prom is also quickly approaching on May ninth. So seniors are required to go to Credit for Life that morning, which is a field trip with Country Bank to kind of, it's like...
It's a task for them to like learn how after college, after high school be like finances, like cars, mortgage, housing, insurance, and all that stuff.
And they give you a job, right?
Yes.
The upper credit is mostly... You spend a meal and it'll get like a crisis, like it could be good, bad, could go to the hospital, get a, you get in a car accident and stuff like that.
Seniors are gonna be taking the AP Art exam on that same morning as well. Most of the scholarships have been already submitted and there's a few deadlines that still remain. And then we have just under a month of classes left. May twenty-third is our last day.
But who's counting?
So eleventh grade, the theme for the banners was childhood books. So the juniors had a class banner themed of the Magic School Bus and then they took, they took first place, fortunately. I think the seniors were pretty good, but, um, on May ninth, Quaybog held an SAT day for all the juniors. So they were able to take the SAT for a cheaper cost through Quaybog. And they are continuing to prepare and get ready for the junior prom. They have the chaperone list all set and then they are selling prom tickets at all the lunches and they're focusing on class days.
Some sophomores have a class banner themed of the Very Hungry Cat.
Freshmen had the Giving Tree and are continuing to collect more class dues.
Eighth grade had a banner themed of the Pigeon Box Series. And they are currently working on a gourmet creations fundraiser. This was an online fundraiser that collected orders for like certain foods, dips, and like spices.
I guess I get the short side, so seventh grade had a class banner themed of Dr. Seuss.
There was a first responder lunch on April twelfth, which was the Monday before break. And during school day from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty, we invited members of the Warren and Westbrook Field Fire Department for lunch. Middle school students prepared a variety of options such as sandwiches, pizza, salad, and cake. And a few current Quaybog students attended the lunch as first responders, Candace Wilcox, me, and Trenton Benson. And then we also had a former Quaybog student, Drew Martinez.
Was Matt Bono there?
Yes.
Yeah, Matt Bono?
Our instructor, Matt Bono.
He's a former Quaybog student?
Oh, right, yeah.
So on April seventeenth, we had a distracted driving presentation run by Fast, Think Fast, Think Fast, and it was through the state police as well. So it was an interactive presentation on distracted driving by the Massachusetts State Troopers. They were given game buzzers and they answered a series of questions. And it also incorporated like music, dance challenges, people were, got up on stage to win like gift cards and everything. And I think everyone had a really good time.
On April sixteenth, the Quaybog ensemble along with the Auburn ensemble played the Casey and Field Benefit Concert with a total of ten pieces. It was a really good outcome, a lot of people came. The art department also sold some of their artwork. Mr. Hanfield's family attended, they enjoyed the performance and we raised about two thousand dollars.
And that's going to a scholarship under Mr. Hanfield's name. Oh, Quaybog alumni and current members of the community took on the one hundred twenty-ninth Boston Marathon. Member of the class of twenty-nineteen, Carly Duff, finished the long twenty-six point two mile race along with class of nineteen seventy-four alumni, Jeff Spencer, and then our current English teacher, Mr. Postock.
We broke his, his goal time by three oh four, so. Our spring sports teams have been working really hard throughout the season. Senior athletes will be finishing off their last high school sport season. The tennis teams will be attending the Swivel Tennis Tournament this Friday. And we're looking forward to see what they do within that. And over the break, the varsity softball team won against Southbridge, but I believe Southbridge forfeited against them, so.
Yeah, they don't have a team.
They forfeit every game.
On April ninth, Miss Curris took several of her students to the basketball Hall of Fame to the Skilled Trades Event, went to ten other schools. There were forty different trades and businesses from medical field and unions to technical schools. They were given the opportunity to meet business owners and people from different trades. And it was a good event to explore what's out there and just prepare them for what they have after graduation.
On April sixteenth, Ms. Zawalski's Biomedical and Medical Innovations displayed their unique projects to other students and faculty. Ms. Hatch's eighth grade science class was also there in attendance presenting Senator Olivera and Representative...
Burkey.
I don't know what's her name. Burkey, attended as guest judges.
As the end of the year is approaching, the calendars are filled with different events. There's different AP exams will take place during the month of May, AP World, AP US History, Psychology, Biology. And all these classes took a mock exam and have been working hard to prepare for their tests. And with the upcoming proms, Quaybog will hold a mock crash on May sixth where tenth through twelfth grade will attend. This will educate on the students on the impact of drinking and driving. And Theater, EMT, and Fire Academy will all be a part of the mock crash. And before leaving for breaks, all the schools in the district took part in a lockdown drill. And at the high school specifically, the faculty and students were given a specific scenario. So for example, what we had is the intruder was in room three oh seven and the students and teachers were allowed, were given the opportunity to stay in their room or evacuate. And the Friday before break award ceremonies were held like honorable and everything.
You should have given that last slide to Nora.
She got the easy part, but...
I think she said like ten words total. Anybody have any questions? So I would say this, this month, you guys did fantastic because you answered all of my questions since I was jotting them down. You got to the end of the slide and, you know, like, were you participating in the first responders lunch, you know, concert, things like that? The one thing you didn't say is, what is the girls' tennis record this spring?
I should know this.
You should know this.
How are we like, for like a Swivel, we're like, we don't, we won all of them.
Overall, you're eight and one.
Wow.
And you played today, right? And you guys won today. And I know you said the Swivel Tournament is Friday, but if they do well in the Swivel Tournament Friday, they play again on Saturday. So that's where they came out all the hard work. All right, you guys did a great job. I'm sure you got some AP exams to start studying for, because you said they are, they are coming up, so. Anybody have any questions?
I think it's too late to start studying.
Continue studying. I was like, I had studied at the last minute, you know? All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Shepherd, you're next, but I don't, I don't see your, I don't see how hard the challenge is.
So everyone, so Haissa...
Went home safe.
Went home. Matic is in South America and Mr. Cost is also in South America. Before I get started, watching you guys stand up here and speak, I remember when you were in seventh grade, I was your English teacher. And remember how I made you speak into the microphone in the middle school cafeteria? You guys were terrified.
Yep.
And now you're probably better public speakers than I am, so, good job. So on April fourth, we did the Traditional Student Government Day Field Trip. I am Tyler Shepherd, the seventh grade history teacher. I've been on the field trip, I think, five, five years in a row now. So we bring one or two students, it kind of changes every year. I, I get the feeling like there's new interns, new staffers in the State House every year and there's a lot of turnover with how this event runs, so it, it's really different every single year. Usually the kids debate two, two bills. And this year, they only presented one bill for the kids to discuss and it was Senate Bill Three Three Five, which is gonna be an interesting one especially for the school committee because it was one where the state is potentially looking at, asking every school district to have a cellphone ban or plan. And as you can imagine, the students were pretty overwhelmingly against passing that bill. Yeah, but some of their, some of their arguments were really impressive. And it wasn't just, oh, I, I want to be on my cellphone because I'm bored in class. It was, you know, I have an AP test and the, the state's definition of social media might include YouTube. And you guys could probably speak to this, but I think you guys watch YouTube videos to help you get ready for your AP tests. So like, one of the big ones I always hear about is, is it Himmler History or something like that for APUSH? Yeah, so, so that's one where if this legislation were to pass, it would even, and some of the kids were pretty eagle-eyed and saw this in the legislation, it would determine if you could be on YouTube after school using your Chromebooks or even your personal devices, which I'm not even sure how the state intends on doing that. So we have, we had Matic sitting in Todd Smolos' seat and Haissa was kind of up in, up in the top. It's, it's really cramped because you've got chaperones and alternates all in there, so like, we kind of have to sneak in and out and, and watch how it goes. And then usually by lunchtime, I think like people maybe from the western part of the state, you know, head out a little bit, so we, we get a pretty good view of it. And after lunch, they kind of let the kids walk up to the lectern and, and, you know, give their, give their say. Some kids take advantage of it and they don't even talk about the bill, they just, you know, make a political message about whatever they want because, you know, you give a seventeen-year-old a chance to talk and they might talk and they might give you their opinion on some things. But some of the arguments the kids made, you know, and I'm not editorializing in any way, but, you know, some of the kids were saying like, there are a lot of issues in school districts, there are school districts where their, you know, staff are getting laid off and the legislature is worried about kids and their cellphones. So it, it is nice to know that we have, you know, seventeen, eighteen-year-old students in this state who can kind of, you know, see a clear picture of things. But yeah, so that was Student Government Day this year.
Anybody have any questions? So I did see, I did see the pictures. Unfortunately, my, my oldest daughter was chosen for that, but it was the year that COVID came out and she wasn't able to go.
Yep.
You know, she's, she, she loves to argue, so she was really disappointed that she didn't get a chance to go to that.
But, you know, to hear, to hear from the kids every year and their ability to talk about it is, is pretty impressive to, you know,
like you said, they're not intimidated.
Right. And, and they kind of give the kids more than one chance to do it, so the, the kids have the chance to talk in the mic. And, you know, seventy-five percent of the kids, they get there and, you know, they get nervous, so they don't take that opportunity. So then they put them in, there's the hallway with all the, the town flags, and then the kids can kind of have a chance to do it there. I, I would say, in my years of doing it, I think I've probably only had, you know, two kids to get up to the mic and be brave enough to talk into it. Obviously, like Antonio Conjullos, who eventually he got an internship at, at the State House through, through this program, right? Like he, he helped rep Smolos. So it is a great opportunity for these kids to get involved and, you know, and for, for some of our former students, right, to get involved with, with the state legislature.
Well, thank you, Mr. Shepherd, for doing that every year. I know that you just pointed out Antonio, Antonio did go to Notre Dame University and is taking up political science. And I think a big piece of that has to do with you and the history department and the opportunities that you presented and to get into Notre Dame and to follow the steps he's doing speaks highly of the history department and the offerings that we have there at Quaybog. So thank you so much for the dedication to our kids.
And did he make the use of the first semester?
He did, he did, yeah.
All right, Mr. Duff, Day on the Hill.
Day on the Hill, so this is the adult version of Student Government Day. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees has a Day on the Hill in Boston where we get to meet with legislature, legislators and talk to them about the key issues that we're looking at within our school districts that might impact us. And so I do plan on attending that on May sixth. There is an open invitation typically, I know that back in the day, Cliff Fountain was always voted in to go to the Day on the Hill. That was his big day, but I, if there's anybody that would like to attend, it is on May sixth. And we will be going out to Boston to talk about things that are going on within our, within the state, particularly during our budget season now.
Plan, I'm going with you, so I think that gives you two more spots in your truck, so.
So if anybody's interested, just email me and I'm more than happy to bring you along.
All right, Superintendent's Report, Senior Trip. So the senior trip is an out-of-state trip, so out-of-state trips have to come to the school committee for approval, which is why they're here. I believe Mr. Duff is speaking on behalf of Mr. Joyneville, who's the senior advisor.
So Mr. Joyneville is the senior advisor, he couldn't be here tonight. The senior class trip this year, they're looking to go to Brownstone in Connecticut. It's a trip that actually our senior classes done the last few years. It's an outdoor recreation activity, it was something that the class voted on. They would leave at seven in the morning, be back around five in the afternoon. The cost of the trip is twenty dollars per student. And it would, it's a trip where it's heavily supervised and there's lots of different activities for the kids to do. And the feedback that we've received from the last three classes that have gone to it is very positive feedback.
What's the date of the album?
I think it's the twenty-nine, I have that right there, just one second. I printed it down, I lost it in the printer, yeah. They, they sent their...
Mr. Joyneville sent it out when he sent out his update for all the...
Oh, sorry, it's June Fette, June Fette, leaving at seven, getting back at Fette. And the admission, the cost for twenty dollars is including bus and admissions. So it's, the senior class has done quite well with their fundraising. And as their class give, they left several table costs that will be presented at graduation to be used at future graduations.
And so I'll entertain a motion to approve the senior class trip to Brownstone, Connecticut on June fifth. Motion to adjourn. A favor. Obvious objections.
Community Compact Grant, in your packet, I did include the application and the award notification for the Community Compact Grant. This is a grant that we entered for, within with the town of Warren. We had initially applied for roughly a hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. Forty-seven thousand dollars of it was for the Tyler ERP cloud-based platform. And the remainder was for Chromebooks for Warren. The thing with the Community Compact Grants is that it has to stay within the town itself. So for example, Chromebooks could be used at Warren and Quaybog because there were students at each, but couldn't be used at Westbrook Field. We will work with Theresa Kowski over in Westbrook Field on next year's Community Compact Grant. It goes every other year. So the good news is, out of the hundred sixty-one thousand dollars, we were awarded forty-seven thousand dollars, which will pay for the upgrade to Tyler, at no cost to the town or the district. So that was the good news, the bad news is we didn't get the additional hundred and ten thousand. But we were encouraged to apply for that amount through the people at the Community Compact Grant. So we did get the forty-seven thousand, which obviously helps with the budget. So I'd like to publicly thank Town Administrator Ferrera and Technology Director LaJoy as well as Ms. Gonzalez for their efforts in putting together the budget, helping get that paperwork submitted. And at the end of the day, the district got forty-seven thousand dollars and their financial service upgraded free of charge. I know that Ally kind of stole my thunder with the first responder luncheon, but Mr. Salvador, Country Bank and Northeast Pizza do a great job. Joe coordinated, it's Joe Salvador, he's our eighth grade civics teacher. His two class, he had two classes that put together the first responder luncheon. We had about thirty first responders here between Warren, Westbrook Field, the search team, state police. It was just, it's an amazing turnout. We actually have it right in the middle of the lunchroom during lunches, so the kids all gave our first responders a standing ovation for all that they do for our school community. And that was made possible through donations through, like I said, Country Bank and Northeast Pizza. They were super, super kind to help out with that. And it goes a long way. Town Administrator Ferrera was there as well. Warren Select, Selectman Meeting, we did have a Warren Select Board meeting last Wednesday night. It was prior to, they had a public complex display in the auditorium. We did meet with the Finance Committee a few weeks ago. And the Finance Committee was trying to decide whether they were gonna put us in the omnibus or not, or whether they were gonna take us out of the omnibus and put us as an article on the warrant. We found out on Tuesday that the Finance Committee had elected to put us in the omnibus, but they left eighty-eight thousand dollars out of our school budget. So the entire school budget, as law requires, wasn't presented to the town. I did attend the, and they were printing the book on Thursday. So the Board of Selectmen were reviewing the warrant in the omnibus on Wednesday night. And Finance Director Gonzalez and I did attend that meeting and we advocated, the first thing that the Board of Selectmen asked was whether they could add the eighty-eight thousand dollars that they left us short in the omnibus. But the Finance Committee is responsible for the omnibus and that, once the Finance Committee voted on the omnibus, then the Board of Selectmen don't have the authority to change the omnibus. So as it stood, we were eighty-eight thousand dollars less. The way that the law is written and there's two different opinions on it, there's Desi and our lawyer's opinion and there's the town opinion on it. And those opinions are vastly different. We, you know, we encountered that two years ago. What we asked of the Board of Selectmen was that if the entire school committee budget wasn't presented to the town, then it would be an automatic no vote because the entire school committee budget wasn't presented. So we did speak with the Select Board and the Select Board opted to put an article on the warrant for the additional eighty-eight thousand dollars, which means at that point, the entire school committee approved budget is presented to the town. It's not presented in one piece, it's presented in two pieces. The way that the law is written, it, it can be presented essentially any way as long as the entire budget is there. For the Select Board to ask whether they could just add it to the omnibus, I thought was a significant improvement in the communications, particularly as two years ago, they took us out of the omnibus and didn't even put the entire budget forward. I think that the Select Board is very interested in working with the school district. I think that the meetings that we attend and the conversations that we've had, having Town Administrator Ferrera in on the teacher negotiations, having Ray Capaco from the Finance Committee in on all our board meetings. I think they understand the level and the effort that gets put into keeping our budget as low as it can and the tremendous work that the committee does to, to keep our budget as low as possible. So at this point, we are on Warren's, on their article and in the omnibus and our total. And Finance Director Gonzalez will talk a little bit about the house, the house budget and the impacts that that might have on our budget. Yep?
So where is this article gonna be the last one on the warrant?
It is the last one on the warrant, however, however, there was, it was the last article that was added to the warrant. It wasn't on the warrant prior to it being printed. But it was brought up during that meeting that that article should come up right after the omnibus. So the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, or Ray Capaco was there, not the Finance Committee, but the Board of Selectmen and Ray Capaco felt that it was necessary to bring that article up right away. So even though it was the thirty-second article, they did recognize, it had to be thirty-two because it was the last one that was presented because they did it the night of the Selectmen's meeting. So they were already talking about where it should go, which I thought was very positive. Okay, so that's the Selectmen Meeting. Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative Update. At this time, we do not have any students at the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative. I think the programs that we have started here have helped to keep kids in district. We do, you know, we do have some students that have come to us without a district, out of district placements that were bound to those placements where we can't choose where they're going because they're already there. But we currently do not have any students that we've sent to the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative. In fact, we took two students back this year that are doing remarkably well. With that being said, we do pay dues and Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative is a business and they do at times run it in a surplus, what would be known as our E and D. They had a, a fairly sizable surplus this year. With that surplus, we had voted last year to allow them to start a capital improvement plan with some of the revenues that they bring in in order to upgrade some of their facilities. We did get a credit of thirteen thousand dollars from the collaborative this year. We do not have a teacher of the deaf and we do not have a, a teacher of the blind or vision teacher. We contract those services out. So it was the recommend, recommendation of Director Finance, Director of Finance Gonzalez and Dr. Esposito, Special Education Director, to use the thirteen thousand dollar credit that we would get back to offset the cost of our contracted services through the last year. So we'll see the savings of thirteen thousand dollars there.
So is that the place that Ray bought the...
Just close the program?
Close the program, so if you're gonna close the program, it'll be legit. You know, is that, you know, just, does it make sense?
That's the place.
That is the place. So I think, and I can speak, I worked at the collaborative for a time. That is the place, um, so I think, and I can speak, but I worked at the collaborative at, for a time, um, and as enrollment is declining, what's happening with sending districts is, um, the program that they're closing is a medic- medically fragile program. And what districts are finding is that sometimes it's less expensive to hire an LPN to work with the student in district and keep the student in district versus spending the hundred or hundred ten thousand dollars to send the student out of district.
Plus transportation.
Plus transportation. So what's happening is at the collaborative, there's a waitlist for students to get into other programs other than the medically fragile program. And I think that currently they had about six students that were in the medically fragile program, and they weren't getting referrals for that program. So, to be able to open up different programs, because it is a business, to be able to open up different programs, they needed space. And this, I think, business-wise, if you can accommodate thirty students in a different program, and you can set up a transition program or a plan for the other six students, financially, it'd make more sense to close a program to service more kids. Because at the end of the day, the collaborative is there to service the districts that it has and what the needs of those districts are. So, yeah.
It's created a real hardship for those people.
Yep.
You gotta feel for.
They gave a very short notice.
Yes.
Like I think it's done this year.
So that thirteen thousand dollar credit, are we receiving that back and then putting it in like an escrow, or is it just being a credit for when we need future services?
So we, right now, we contract out for teacher of the deaf and vision, so as those bills come in, it'll, it'll, we'll have the statement for thirteen thousand, and they'll just bounce that off of that. Yep, so we're not.
So we're not sending anything back?
Well, at the end of the day, we might get back two or three thousand dollars depending upon how many services we need to do.
Depends how much we're expending, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's good for, you know, at the end of the day, it's good for us. So that's the SWAP update, uh, the Q M, QRMA adjust principal search update. We did, uh, have applicants the first round, we did our interview process. Um, at the end of the interview process, we were not able to identify a principal that we thought was right for our school community, our students and our staff. So we did post again, that posting will close on Monday, we'll look at applicants on Monday. We do have twenty-seven applicants, which is positive, however, um, there are quite a few repeat, um, you know, repeat applicants, but we will go through the process, set applicant, applicant, uh, interviews up again and go through the process. So I'm hopeful that we will have a principal to start at this point on July first.
I have a question.
Yep.
If the scenario continues in this path, where if this group doesn't pan out, what's the next step? Do we have a recruiter come help us find one? What's, what's, what do we do to make sure we have someone here for July first?
I, if, if this doesn't, if this set of interviews doesn't pan out, we're going to post again right away at the end of March, I mean, end of May. And that's where you'll get your next round of applicants that are either leaving districts, um, for other reasons. Um, so I think having, you know, Mr. Levalle's been doing a nice job filling in, um, but I think having the leeway, if we go, if it takes us three interview processes to find the right person, then so be it, it takes us three. I'm not, and I said this to the folks on the, um, interview committee, I'm not interested, interested in filling a seat to fill a seat. We want the, we could have filled this seat two weeks ago, but it's not the right person, and we're not gonna, I'm not gonna jeopardize everything that we've done here to just fill a seat.
Who's on the interview?
Uh, there's, one, two, a combination, there's a teacher, special education teacher, guidance counselor, director of student services, um, vice principal, myself, it's about ten of us. It's not an overwhelming committee, which is good, um, and it's, it's a variety of people that have different interests than where we're at.
I think, uh, it's probably important to state that Principal Duff, oh, actually Superintendent Duff has done a great job being Superintendent Duff and Principal Duff. Given the, uh, unfortunate circumstances that the district was, uh, is dealing with, um, maybe we should just give him a five thousand dollar stipend and have him do both jobs. Doing such a great, doing such a great job as is.
Craig, don't be stupid.
Try to save the budget, Craig.
Make a sense, go make a sense out of it.
Make a sense.
That, that sound like a moose.
I was, I was leaving a little room for negotiation. We gotta save this budget. No, in all seriousness, uh.
Absolutely.
He's been running around, as we all know, doing dual, dual duty and probably bothering the rest of the administrative staff as a result of it, so.
No.
Never.
I was looking in your direction.
I just have one quick question on the first responder luncheon, how many years is that the gig place? Is that, is this the first year?
This is our third year doing it.
Okay.
Yep.
So something that's been going on for a little while and it's gonna continue?
Did you say Westbrookfield came up? Westbrookfield did, Rich Laffey year.
Was it, was there a good turnout?
We had like probably twenty from Warren and ten from Westbrookfield in there. Yep.
That's awesome. All right, well, thank you for that update. All right, so we have, uh, regular meeting minutes of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. If anybody sees any grammatical additions, subtractions, or anything to that sort.
I did make a motion to table those minutes till next week.
No, you want to table those next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll get to that one. Though this is the one you were.
Make motion to approve the minutes from March thirty-first?
Second.
Second.
Motion made in second and any further discussion?
Favor.
And as Mr. Morse just said, so the minutes from April fifteenth, we've got some, uh, formatting errors and things like that that will work out, and we'll just table those and approve them for next month, so. All right, communications, we have, uh, the minutes, the compact grant, um, the budget highlights from the House, and, uh, I would like to point out that, uh, the, uh, the email from District Attorney Early is congratulating the Klabin Regional High School's event. Um, so I guess everybody can make, um, you know, some formatting issues, so, um.
See the header?
The header says Waybug, but the, the, the body says Klabin, so.
Free money's free money, but in the past, that was like a thousand, wasn't it?
I think it's always been five dollars.
It's always been five dollars.
Are we splitting it with Klabin or?
No.
No, yeah, that was, not that I don't.
We don't split anything. Yeah, just make sure it's the right queue on the, on the check, so, all right, perfect. So, financial business matters. Nikki, is that you?
That's me.
All right. Lay pause.
So, as everybody knows, a couple of weeks ago, the House of Representatives presented their budget, um, so it is in our favor slightly. Um, chapter seventy and our, um, charter, um, tuition, if this goes through, is enough to off, help offset our above minimum contributions for Warren and Westbrookfield, so, um, you know, cross your fingers that it goes through. Um, other highlights, um, Circuit Breaker and Transportation are receiving supplemental revenues for a one-time increase in FY twenty-six. They are stating, for Transportation in particular, ninety-eight percent, as you know, in our budget, we have, um, Mr. Duff had to really convince me, but we have conservatively put in there, um, about ninety-two percent for Transportation. Um, and Circuit Breaker is going from forty-four percent to, um, seventy-five percent next year. It is only for one year, current, currently. It's using supplemental funds from that one-time, um, taxation that they had, so they're required to use it, and so they're using it. Um, one of the areas of concern, though, is the rural aid, um, that has been decreased, um, to about half, um, but districts are, um, working with representatives to get that taken care of. So overall, um, positive and hopeful that, um, the Senate budget comes out and it will sustain those levels of funding, if not a little bit less.
We didn't get much for rural aid last year, right?
We got about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year.
Was that much?
Yep, so, and we've used a good chunk in our budget this year, or coming year, so.
The other exciting news that we learned today, uh, was that the Student Opportunity Act will be out again next year. Um, and that was something that we use for our literacy coaches this year. Uh, the highest amount that we can apply for is a hundred thousand dollars, uh, which we will do, and hopefully we'll be able to keep a literacy coach next year because of the Student Opportunity Act. Um, and the only other thing to make note of, and this came up at the, uh, Warren Select Board meeting and Finance Committee, is transportation reimbursement can't be used to offset the above minimum contribution because transportation is its own line item. So when you make an adjustment to transportation, if you're increasing the reimbursement, it comes off of the total local assessment, but it doesn't touch above minimum contribution. So what I tried to explain to the town of Warren, and they, I understand where they're coming from, at the end of the day, whether I take eighty thousand from above minimum or I give you eighty thousand in transportation, it's eighty thousand off of the, um, off of the total operating assessment. What they, what they get stuck on is what is the above minimum contribution. Last year, the total assessment helped us, this year, it's a lower, the above minimum contribution, that's already us. Um, so, uh, the nice part is with the trans, uh, special education circuit breaker, that has to do with transportation reimbursement. And if that number sticks, we might pick up an additional twenty thousand dollars or so and circuit break it. We can use Circuit Breaker to offset the above minimum contribution because that doesn't have its own transportation specifically reimbursable in the chapter seventy-one A formula. Um, so it, it's just, it's a shell game, um, and what they look at is the above minimum contribution. Even though the assessment came down, that above minimum stayed the same with Warren. So just so that, you know, when you hear the transportation, how it's really helping the towns, it is helping the towns, but it's not helping the district with the above minimum. It's helping them with the local assessment.
Well, that's how we did it last year with the transportation.
Yep.
One thousand.
Yep.
At the end of the day.
At the end of the day, that's where we're at. So, um, just for the newer board members that, you know, that's how that kind of, that's how it flows.
All right, what's up, community updates? Mr. Morgan. I've just been relatively quiet ever since, huh?
Yep, so we didn't meet, so we'll meet again.
Personnel, Mr. Lainey, we're out updating executive session.
All right.
And next meeting to be determined. Mr. Morse, Ozzy.
No news.
And TV, no news. Mr. Burgess Building.
No meeting due to budget season, next meeting, May twelfth.
There you go, all right. All right, so new business, um, so I asked to put on the agenda, the Northbrook tuition agreement. So I'm sure as you guys have been reading in the paper that, uh, you know, there's, uh, discussions going on about the tuition agreement with, with Northbrook Field. Mr. Duff and I, um, reached out to a member of the regionalization committee, we then since spoke with one of the selectman members over in Northbrook Field. Mr. Duff reached out to the superintendent of Northbrook Field, um, to inform their school committee, um, basically of, you know, the, the thought process moving forward with a tuition agreement. So we've talked with legal counsel, um, we've talked with, you know, the select board, the, uh, town, is she the treasurer accountant?
Accountant.
Accountant, um, a member of the finance committee, you know, some, some other, you know, like the chair of the school committee and things like that. So basically, what it is, is it is still like a preliminary phase. So there are certain things that need to be, you know, ironed out and, and discussed, you know, one would be the term, you know, when would it start? Northbrook Field cannot enter into a contract longer than three years, so the extent of it would be a three-year term, you know, um, would it be ever agreed? Then at the end of the first year, it just rolls into another year, it just stays as a perpetual three-year agreement, still is to be determined. Um, the fee, you know, is what, what would we charge them for it? And I know, uh, Finance Director Gonzalez and the, uh, and the town accountant in Northbrook Field are in a meeting to discuss that and figure out what the fees, schedules would be, um, you know, with a kind of, you know, incremental increases year over year. It would just be a straight fee for regular ed students, uh, any special ed students that carry an additional cost would be an additional cost to the town of Westbrookfield. So it, they would pay for that additional service.
How, how would you break that down, though, you know, it's maybe five or four or something like that?
So you would have to be very concerned about, you know, any kind of type of violations and things like that, so I mean, it's, you know, are you talking about that or are you talking about like?
Yeah, you're still, yeah, you're talking about it could be an additional fee if someone has, needs services.
So say the student needs.
How do you break that down, you know, that, that's a.
That's a, that's gonna be a lot, I think, work, you know, do you have any, uh?
I would say we would, I mean, we would be working with, um, student services, you know, they have direct charges, those are easy. And we'd have to come up with a process for that, so.
You couldn't be selective in what students were being accepted, is basically what is.
No, the tuition agreement would be per grade, so, you know, whether it be seven to twelve, or nine to twelve, or anything like that. Um, you know, one of the points that need to be ironed out, or we do with the kids that we have here already from Northbrook Field. So, you know, their school choice, if the school choice fee is a five thousand dollar fee, let's just say the fee is ten thousand dollars. You know, what do we do with those kids that are already here? Do we grandfather the high school students in? Do we grandfather the elementary school students until they hit the age of the tuition agreement? And then we charge them the tuition agreement fee, so there's things like that that still need to be determined. And then obviously, transportation, you know, what are we gonna do for transportation? Are we gonna do a door-to-door delivery, or are we gonna do a, you know, like a bus stop like they do for the school choice bus? So right now, the school choice bus goes to one place in Northbrook Field. The kids that are school choiced here go to that place, and all get on the bus at the same time, and the bus drives to the school. So, obviously, if you have a, uh, an agreement where you have students living all over the town, are you gonna require those students to go to one spot? Right, bus, or are we gonna do it, you know, as, as a route? Um, we did talk to legal counsel, we did talk to the transportation gentleman, they did our bid. Um, because the number of routes is less than twenty-five percent of our total busing contract, we do not need to go out to bid. So we would just get Mr. McCarthy's, you know, fee for, you know, say the school choice bus, and that would be the, the fee for, for the route. So, and I know where Northbrook Field, obviously, they have their fees for what they're selling, there'll be the savings, I'm sure, for them because they're gonna go down to a one-tier instead of a two-tier, and obviously, they don't have the cost of, and their route cost is more expensive than our route cost, so.
Would that extra transportation still be considered regional?
It would not be regional transportation, it would be just like school choice or athletics. But paid by the town in Northbrook Field, paid by Quabog. Um, the difference between tuition and regional agreement, as you all know, we went through the regional agreement study with Northbrook Field. Um, and Northbrook Field essentially would be come through the regional agreement, part of the Quabog Regional School District. And then, um, you know, moving forward, there would be voting members on the school committee, uh, they would have the opportunity to have transportation reimbursement because they'd be part of the Quabog region. A big piece of it was that we had to keep all of the buildings open at that point because of MSBA projects. With a tuition agreement, essentially what would happen is Northbrook Field would have to decide what grade levels to come, and I'll just say it was nine through twelve. They would have to inform the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that they were closing their high school. And then Quabog, they could close their high school and enter into a tuition agreement with Quabog, saying that Quabog is gonna charge our, charge the town of Northbrook Field this amount of money for our kids to have the opportunity to be educated at Quabog. Um, so we essentially, when Northbrook Field students hit ninth grade, or if we did seven through twelve, they closed their middle high school, um, which I think would be more realistic, to be honest with you. Um, but what would happen is, uh, once students hit seventh grade in Northbrook Field, they would come to Quabog. They could school choice to other districts, which is how school choice works, but the districts wouldn't receive the tuition agreement funding. They would receive five thousand dollars where, I'll say hypothetically, Andrew said ten thousand, I'm not saying that that would be the best number. I know that Director of Finance Gonzalez will look at it with, um, the town, and make a recommendation to the school committee. But we essentially would at least double the amount that we're getting for school choice without having to take on the additional responsibility of obtaining, of maintaining bill, business, uh, buildings, um, paying for transportation. All of that would come directly to Quabog. So it would actually be a revenue source for us, but it would also give Northbrook Field the opportunity to provide their students with the services that Quabog has to offer. So it's almost a win-win.
We'd be paid for the student, but not pick up any of the extras.
Correct.
Of maintaining Northbrook Field's school.
We'd have no obligation to that whatsoever.
I have a question.
Yep.
So what if you had a student with significant disabilities, they could be outpaced, that stayed with Northbrook Field?
That is built into the tuition agreement.
It's built into that?
Yep.
So we would, so if somebody got outpaced for a hundred and twenty-five, that would.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So um have we, as in a school system, done any type of analysis on the impact that taking in potentially hundred, hundred and twenty-five students, whatever students. Populations over at Northbrook Field will have on our staffing and just the day-to-day business of running the school?
Yeah.
Think of like Dr. Esposito, her team, I think about just general staffing uh potential strains.
So we have looked at, and I can only speak from a purely number base, I can't necessarily. Until you get into it and you start looking at, you know, special education services and things like that, on a numbers base, we can absorb the high school tomorrow without a problem. That's roughly sixty kids because of the way that the schedule's set up, you can, you know, spread it out over seven different courses. At the middle school, we can absorb their current sixth grade, which would be seventh grade next year. It would put us at a hundred and five at the middle school seventh grade, which is a very doable number. The difficult number is eighth grade. Uh right now, we're at a hundred and thirteen kids in eighth grade. Huge number for us, the biggest number we've had in a while. Uh I think right now, they have twenty-six uh eighth, uh seventh graders that would be going into eighth grade, that put us at a hundred and thirty-nine kids in eighth grade. Um which means that we would likely have to hire another teacher for eighth grade. Um but I can tell you that the cost benefit would be north of six or seven hundred thousand dollars if you hired a teacher. But then you look at special education services and things like that, I can't give you a definitive number without seeing what the ADPs are like.
Yeah, and I don't know what the tuition amount would be, but you know, if you're if you're taking in those students. It's definitely gonna have an impact on our staff, so we have to add a teacher potentially. Are we gonna have to add, you know, different, whatever, social workers or other services? And then, so there's expenses potentially there, and then. Say we have two, three out-of-placement services, and now you're up to three hundred grand, like that can go pretty quickly. So I think we just gotta, and I'm sure you guys are doing this, but we just have to do sort of a, I think a a deep dive as to what we're inheriting.
So I didn't, just so we're clear, out-of-district placements belong to the town, it doesn't belong to us, it belongs to Northbrook Field.
Wasn't that the question that you just asked?
I'm sorry, I thought you said it was more than this.
No, it's part of the tuition agreement that if, if, yeah, if you have, it belongs to the town itself, that's not the way. I apologize, no, 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 it was, it's in the tuition agreement that they're responsible, they're responsible.
Correct.
Not us.
Okay.
And whether.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, I was like, we get three kids, that's three hundred grand.
Yeah, no, that that belongs to Northbrook Field.
Okay.
The attractive thing for Northbrook Field is that some, you know, obviously number one, financially, um the their budget is up over seventeen percent, which is up over one point two million dollars. Um and I know that they're going to be asked to cut their budget by a million dollars. Um there's not a lot of room to cut a budget, so you're talking impacting programs across the board. Um you know, whether it's music, you know, health, sports, theater, those types of things. The other piece is that we do a really good job of keeping our kids in district, um which I think at the end of the day, if you can service kids in your home district. Whether, you know, it's not Northbrook Field, it's Quabog, but you keep kids in your school district, it goes a long way for those kids. And with our, Dr. Esposito's done a tremendous job of not sending kids out of district by building programs to help sustain programs and keep kids in our towns. Um that's very attractive for towns. You know, money aside, it's important for kids to stay connected with their with their peers. So I think that alone um has been, you know, one of the bigger things is how do we service those kids? When you talk about the, since whether it's OT, PT, speech, special education teacher pairs, that's where in the tuition agreement, when you're adding those additional costs on top of a tuition amount. If you have a tuition amount of ten thousand dollars, and Phil's question was, you know, what if somebody, i- if a student requires one or five times thirty, you know, pull-out for math or something like that? That's where you take the salary that you have, you divide it by the amount of services they need and the kids that you have in that class, and you add that to that. And that's part of the way a formula would be derived and delivered, um so.
I know.
Yep.
Um has there been any discussion of talking about staff at the high school and how we might be able to help? Because if it goes to high school, obviously, you have those staff members. Is there any discussion of talking about?
And once again, the hard part, and this is the hard part, and it it always impacts people, and I understand that. Um and, you know, I give the school committee a lot of credit um for what you guys, you know, what you have to go through. Education at the end of the day, unfortunately, is a business, um and it's about kids, but it's also a business. If you can't run your business because of lack of funding, um you know, and we've been, we've had to cut over the years. They, you know, we're not out of this, this budget cycle by any means. Um at the end of the day, you need to make some difficult decisions, we talked about that a little bit with the collaborative today, which way are you gonna go? I think for Northbrook Field right now, financially, it's very difficult, and then. Everybody is doing the best that they can in Northbrook Field, but at the end of the day, the kids aren't getting what they need to get. And you can only put so much money towards them because at the end of the day, you don't have the kids to support it. Um so are there conversations around that? I think conversations would happen, but it would be on a needs basis. Because right now, if I can absorb sixty kids without adding a staff member, then financially, we're gonna add sixty kids without adding a staff member. Because we have to be, you know, understanding of where we are with our budget process.
It also gives the students of Northbrook Field, you know, the opportunity to participate in, you know, all of our AP classes, the FIRE Academy, the CNA program and, you know, the sport, the sports and all the other things like that. That, you know, they don't necessarily have over there, so.
I guess it's more of a a comment and a question, and add on what you were saying, it would be a phenomenal opportunity for the students. To not only have, I mean, look at our beginning of our meeting today about the wonderful, amazing things that our kids have a chance to do that other districts may not have an opportunity to do. And also to meet kids from Warren and Westbrook Field, and I think it'd be good for socially for that to happen as well. Um more of a question, I don't wanna get too far into the weeds, Superintendent, but um I think like lunches and stuff like that, I mean, that's not an issue with those extra.
Okay. At this point, though.
We're not recreating the wheel on this, this has been done in other districts.
Yes.
So are we, are we at least kind of taking a look at how that's been done, the steps that they use to make the pockets work? And how that impacted the school system that was taking on the students?
Yeah, we're, they're basically, you know, kind of using as a, as a guideline of a single town that joined a regional district in the state of Massachusetts a couple of years ago.
Okay.
So, you know, that's that's kind of the template that we're using to to base things on.
So I've worked in two districts that have brought in students from other towns, Southern Berkshire and Pioneer.
Okay.
I just said, was it Northern Berkshire or Southern?
Yep.
And we did, um we did have a conference call with Michelle Griffin from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Um and asked some very specific questions, I know that Nikki had sent over some uh follow-up questions to Michelle over the weekend. Um but we'll be looking at some different tuition agreements with districts that have entered into this. Um so that we can make sure that, number one, what we're doing is best for our district, and at the same time, what's best for Northbrook Field students and for their town. Um you know, our goal is to help, help offset our budget as well. Because, you know, we knew FY twenty-six would be difficult, FY twenty-seven may be even more difficult. And as you know, the district's always looking for ways to help offset the local contributions or the local assessments. And I think this could be a win-win for Quabog and for and for Northbrook Field because we're not taking on the liabilities of buildings and maintenance and all other different things that we would have with the regional agreement.
In addition to the towns, you know.
Steve, is, oh, I'm sorry, i- is this just a uh a school committee decision, and, okay, so it's not requiring?
It's not a town vote, it's a school committee vote. And what I would uh request, if possible, um potentially a vote from our school committee to enter into conversations with Northbrook Field regarding the tuition agreement. But not vote to accept it until we approve the tuition. Um but I think the first step is to say, yes, I think this is something that would be beneficial for our, for our students, our staff and our communities. And uh pending the fact that we need to carefully look at the tuition agreement and as a committee, um you know, have a vote on that tuition agreement to see if it makes sense for us.
Is there freedom in the tuition agreement, or is that something where there are numbers provided by the state that dictate what we? So there is some freedom in making sure that that number fits Quabog as well as entices Northbrook Field?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's the end of. Fee, I mean, the 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 number of students, I mean, we can't, we can't cap it, you know, let's say five a grade, I mean, it's it's, whatever students are in their district.
Yeah, but but there's freedom in this, in setting that rate.
Setting that rate, yep, no, there are, and I think that that's where, number one, Nikki's experience with doing this in a couple of districts, plus um Michelle Griffin's experience. And to be honest with you, we've had a very good relationship with the town in Northbrook Field. Um you know, we did go to a meeting with Representative Bartram and Senator Durant, and we failed to get questions from about thirty people. We didn't know that's why we're going there, but that's what ended up happening. Um and, but there is an appetite, obviously, people are, like Megan said, people are impacted, and that's the reality of it. Um but the reality of it is, if we don't continue to find ways to continue to support our budget, people in our district are gonna be impacted as well. Uh it's our bill to fight for our district and support what we can at the same time.
If hypothetically, the town of Northbrook Field's gonna tuition a million dollars to our district potentially, let's just say. Do they have a say in the, do they have a seat at the table as far as, say, an operation of the school district? Do we have to account for more spots on the school committee? I know it's different than the regional agreement where we had to, but just in general, what type of, do they have any type of say in how we run our school?
You can make this tuition agreement amenable to whatever works for us.
What I've seen in tuition agreements is that um, I'll take Northbrook Field for example, they could have a, a person who is assigned to the school committee, but it's a non-voting person. Is what I've seen in, uh i- and I'm not saying that's what this agreement needs to be, but that's what I've seen in other agreements, is that somebody from Northbrook Field comes to our school committee meetings, but they can't vote. Just so they have some input.
Does Northbrook Field have any School Choice students?
I wanna say they have.
School Choice in?
Into their district.
I think it's a, especially right now when they don't want to try it.
But none of them.
Oh, I don't know if it's, but if, when I was there, it was on the high school.
I think we can look at the DESI website, and I mean, it's it's pretty uh.
So we would take those also, correct?
Uh, and once again, this would be, yeah, Nikki writing the question. So for those students, Northbrook Field, put in, so right now, hypothetically, we're looking at seventh through twelfth grade, if you have kids in the elementary building. Northbrook Field doesn't have an agreement with other districts for them to tuition into us. So and I know Nikki's writing it down and she'll ask Michelle Griffin this, but I would think, and I'm only trying to think logically and that doesn't happen often. I would think that once the student graduates sixth grade, that they would have to go back to the ascending district because Northbrook Field doesn't provide those services.
Would we have to grandfather in?
Do they have one, do they have someone in the high school level that are from, you know, if that School Choice didn't offer field knowing this is gonna happen? That's a great way to then end up over here.
All we can tell is how many students are School Choice then, we can't tell what grade levels they are.
So we can follow up, we'll follow up with that conversation as well.
I think there's obviously plenty of questions to continue to be had and more information to abound, but I would say I'd be willing to put forward a motion if we're at that point.
Yeah, I mean, this is just basically preliminary information because like I said, it was, it's in the paper, so you know, before you guys start saying, well, we're about in the paper, we're not here firsthand. You know, why don't you guys talk about it firsthand? So um if you wanna make said motion, I will entertain a motion.
I might make a motion to enter into talks with Northbrook Field on possible, a possible tuition agreement. Pending further understanding of the numbers, the financial investment.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second and any further discussion? On favor? opposed. Okay, uh, we don't have anybody in the public tonight. So uh we do not have a public hearing period, we do need to make a motion to go into executive session. Mr. Morse, I will entertain said motion.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, to include members of the school committee, uh Finance Director Consol's, Cindy Courtney, and Superintendent Duff.
Re creating an open session.
Re creating an open session before adjournment.